Entire roll of toilet paper and half of a container of paper towels into the bathroom.
Pastor Ward, come on up to the podium, please.
Leonard Lord, I pastor 8114 Leo Kid Avenue. No, just addressing that, Mayor, what we found at the church, you've probably heard of odor ban. It's one of the best things when we started finding something to disinfect with. And so, we sprayed down everything with it. It can just be sprayed and dried, like when we have, and we've not had a problem. So, it might be something you want to look into. When I talked to them about it and this thing happened, they said it was the best, and that's not toxic, but yet it's to kill the germs. So, it's worked good for us ever since this pandemic started. We've been doing our fellowship all churches, all we've got five bathrooms. And that's what we've used, could just spray it down and walk away pretty much, you know, after it's cleaned, you know, just kind of keep it up, okay? If that'll help.
Thank you, Pastor Ward.
You're welcome. Okay, odor ban, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Mr. Sossman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pastor Ward. Goodness, though, we will check it out. Sean's a good man, he'll do it, and we'll see if we can get the tables opened up as quickly as possible. Thank you. Next item is, I'll remind everybody that this coming Thursday, the 24th day of September, I know you're going to say, yeah, we know all about that budget, public hearing, which is our second and last one that night. But earlier in the day, on the, if you'll recall back three or four weeks ago, when we discussed the dredge project, if you will, Duber Engineering completed it, was in contact with Assistant County Administrator, one of their chief engineers who's over that project, as well as their Restore Act Coordinator, and their compliance officer. And so, that's a good number. And we discussed it, they've asked me several questions, we've answered their questions all affirmatively. So, this coming Thursday, without further ado, we're going to be publishing for bids on BidNet and DemandStar, I believe is the name of the other platform, the advertisement for bids. And so, those bids then will stay open until the 21st day of October, at which time we'll open them in this council room and record them and bring them back to you subsequently at a meeting after that. So, we're making forward progress on that. I'll try to answer any questions you may have relative to that project right now, if you have any. If not, what I'd like to do with that proceeding, because we're going to be using some CRA money, and of course, part of it's going to be reimbursed from Pasco County via the Restore Act, which I'm not sure how long that reimbursement will take, that's up to them, but also the Treasury Department of the US Government, which is kind of scary, but it is what it is. What I'd like to do going forward is to create something that's pursuant to the CRA statutes, and that is to create a three-year, you know, three-year CRA program, which would be similar to a CIP, but it would be separate and apart from your CIP, which should be funds from other sources, like either utilities or your general fund revenues, reserves. So, I'd like to create that. And then also, at some point in time, I think you should consider also creating a CIP, which we're going to set forth in more positive fashion than what we have. Now, we have a project list, and I had a gentleman contact me the other day, he's not here present tonight, but asked me about updating that. The last time it was updated, it was not too long ago, that was back in June. But, we've made some forward progress on a number of those items. So, I had a few extra moments this week, and we've updated it, and I have copies to pass out to you tonight. Valerie Wise, my assistant, will be, if she hasn't already, this afternoon, will post it on our website, it will be posted tomorrow. So, that's something else that's positive. That's the four items I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions on any other that we have tonight, if you have some at this time or later.
Thank you, Mr. Sossman. Anything, Mr. McCleary?
I do have one, and we briefly discussed it in the budget, with the increased revenues that we are asking, it's for infrastructure improvements, because we know we're going to need things done. So, can we do a line item? You and I talked about that in the budget, like a CIP, I guess, for specific things like infrastructure?
Well, you can do that, just for, and that would be advisable, that would go along with the CIP, capital improvement program. I know some people get lost in that alphabet soup, but I would suggest that you could do it during the year after we get this budget approved and dialed in next month. But then, we'd come back to you and recommend certain projects based on what you tell us, your wants and goals and objectives are.
Well, I think that taxpayers can see what projects are, the money is actually going towards. And if we have the infrastructure, and we have the pipes and things like that, I think it'll make a big difference.
Right, sir. And besides that one project we have tonight, the one that's out at the WOD, the Waterfront Overlay District, there's a number of others that I have discussed with staff that needs to be done, because we've got some aging lift stations. I think we have like 44 or so, not just inside the city, but also in our utility jurisdiction, just obviously outside the city. A number of those, as well as some of those small two-inch lines, need to be updated.
Okay, so we can then start categorizing some of this revenue into projects?
Absolutely, that would be smart.
Thank you.
Let me clarify, if we're going to do CIP, is that going to be for basically specifically for the utilities fund?
A lot of it could be utilities. Recently authorized the acquisition of a $535,000 fire truck. I've actually talked to the fire chief, and also talked to our new police chief about some items that they might need to plug in for future, whether it's a year from now or three years from now. I would suggest you start out with at least a five-year CIP program.
Because if we have a CIP program, I just want to, from a budget standpoint, try and draw from budget pots where we have surpluses, such as utilities, or even CRA or something like that, versus, you know, general fund having CIP, I think would be more difficult.
I think it gets convoluted a little bit, if you try to mix CRA and CIP.
Yeah, I would definitely want to, my mayor's correct, I'd like to separate CRA projects and have a three-year CRA program, and then a separate CIP program. And a lot of things in CIP will be infrastructure, will come from the utility funds.
Okay. I mean, just jumping in here, I think, you know, we're definitely on the right track, but we should definitely identify and prioritize our capital improvement needs first.
Yes.
And then, see what all of these projects are, and then we can start allocating them to specific funds, prioritizing them, seeing which ones come out of which budget, and then, you know, if utility, for instance, has the most need of all their projects, well, that's a little easier than maybe some other funds, in terms of identifying the pot of money.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything else?
At this, I want to move on to comments from council here. I'm going to start with Mr. Kinsella, and we'll work our way around.
The main question that we keep bringing up every meeting is our CAD system, is that totally online now?
As soon as we get the interagency agreement approval get signed, then it's just a matter of picking a date to get it going.
But all the bugs have been worked out, so it just requires flipping a switch.
I'd say yes, but I'm not an IT person, but yeah, basically, that's correct.
Glad to hear that. The Port Authority Board, we talked about, of course, they're very active. And they turn to the council, asking to be heard, and some type of a special meeting. I really don't want that to sit. I don't want it to sit idle. There's a good core residence there, and how do we go about, do we need to make a special meeting? But I'd really like to see us to entertain the Port Authority Board, listen to what they have to say. Also, they have a, with the Crystal River restoration video, they have a couple of those, I'd really like to see that. But just need direction, what do we need to do to keep this moving, keep them involved?
Can I make a suggestion on that point? I think the, really the main thing they're working on is dredging, whether or not we can, and if it's cost prohibitive, et cetera. So, it would be a dredging workshop would probably encompass most of the issues they're looking at, correct?
Honestly, I don't know until we meet with them. They ask last meeting that, let's get together, let them do the presentation. I think part of it, of course, majority of it probably is a dredging piece. But still, I'd like to hear what they have to say, what research they've done, what input that they have, so we can keep this moving along.
Well, the question is, can we do a more general workshop about what's going on with Port Authority? Is that what you're?
Can I?
Go ahead.
I didn't want to jump in. I'm all for, you know, he actually kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I think we should have a general workshop with all parties, and let's start discussing, be it dredging, grant funding sources, whatever they've talked about. I know there was some concern about bringing the new city manager on board prior to this workshop. To me, if it's a workshop, then it's videotape. He can, he or she can watch the videotape and be fully up to speed on it. So, you know, I kind of echo those same comments, that, you know, I'd rather see a workshop sooner rather than later. They're charged up, I don't want to lose their momentum and kind of put them on the back burner. I know a lot of citizens are of the same nature, so, you know, let's ride the momentum, have some discussion points, and at least give them some direction of our ideas and where to go with it.
We actually brought that up last time they were here. One of the things we discussed is we find out what the tolerance is from the citizens for possibly participating in the dredging. And I know that went around, and I thought that would be the perfect time we could discuss that. I mean, some people say absolutely, I'm not paying a penny for it. Other people are more than willing to put in quite a bit of money to get their canals done. So, that could all be done at a workshop.
So, by consensus, can we set up a workshop?
You said it.
Jim says yes.
Okay.
Well, let's go, let's go by, let's go.
Set a workshop, my suggestion is to give a set, we can set a workshop, like you said, set the parameters of the workshop, we're delegated for someone, a workshop generally, you set forth who's going to speak, so you say the Port Authority Board and the council is going to speak, who's going to be the speakers, you understand what I mean? Are you going to invite the general public to participate, what would be the extent of that participation, and those kinds of things?
Okay.
Well, what I was thinking on that line is, I think that, who is it, Carl Roth?
Yeah, Carl.
Set out a nice kind of agenda for us and presentation, so I would think he would want to do the same. And then, we would utilize his points of discussion, and the board's points of discussion will work off it. So, that would be my intent if we do this.
So, it would be a workshop established by council, agenda set forth by the Port Authority Board, open to the public?
Sure.
And?
Set a date and time, and we're done.
And if we can set a date and time that coincides with the meeting already, it might be a better way to do it.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, any of us can set up a workshop, or request a workshop be set up. What I'm trying to do is get input from the Port Authority Board as to their timing as well, to kind of align schedules, for lack of a better term, and make sure they're all on board for coming here before we set the date, so they can tell us what dates they're available, and then we set it from there. We don't have to set it tonight.
No.
Because any two of us can set it.
You can authorize this to set up, to set a workshop.
There you go.
If you don't vote on things, you just discuss.
Great.
Mr. Sossman, you okay with that?
Absolutely. I've actually had several phone calls from Mr. Roth and emails, and so I'll be glad to reach back out to him and have him to consult with the PAB members, and then bring back some dates and times to this board.
All right, very well. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
I wanted to, I wanted to, you know.
I'd just like to see this keep moving along. I mean, we've got a group of citizens that are, put a lot of time in there, in their heart and soul. And it seems like historically, they talk about it, and then it goes nowhere. And the fact that we have citizens that are very active and want to be, to keep this moving, I like to see this kept moving. Okay? That's all I have right now.
My turn?
Yep.
We mentioned the interagency agreement. I know something like that typically has to go before council, so where is it? Because I want to see this CAD program going, because I'm tired of hearing about it.
It's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, tonight. There we go.
Yes, sir. You're ready to mail them.
I got it on a different one, sorry.
Yeah, it's the last.
There we go.
Because I didn't want to interrupt you, but I was going to tell you that it was the last one for tonight.
Okay, that's that one. All right, there we go, never mind then. The only other item I had, other than the Port Authority Board, was the mangrove issue. Not only did I get feedback from my wife on the issue, but several of the neighbors. And it was quite impactful. I have pictures, they ripped out a good 30, 40 feet of mangroves right along the coastline, and it's one of the last natural coasts or natural canals that we have there. In speaking with FDEP and SWF MUD, they're very upset, and they are investigating as well. I think from a city standpoint, we should probably try, and I asked Mr. Sossman and Mr. Foss to establish some sort of parameters that have to go through the city, so this doesn't happen again. Because I have a lot of upset residents that they're obviously natural resources impacted. So, you know, I am kind of calling for us to put together some sort of plan, so something like this doesn't happen again. It was quite disturbing, and I have photos, if anyone wants to see it afterwards. But it's, and a lot of irritated residents. So, we should really look into this, to prevent this from happening again. My guess is, the state agencies will address the infractions accordingly, with whoever does it and however does it. But I think it's part of our responsibility to make sure it doesn't happen again. And that was it.
Thank you. I didn't have anything, I was going to pass it to.
Yeah, well, we've covered almost everything I have from everybody. The only question I had left was for the chief, and it was regards to the CAD again. So, once that's all taken care of, and the fire department, you'll both be able to generate call reports at that time through the CAD system, correct?
That's correct.
Our system's actually live right now. We're receiving calls from the county, when the county puts them in.
So, could then you, both agencies then?
Yeah, we're just waiting.
Start giving it, yeah.
Yeah, we're just waiting, ready to go.
Thank you. That was it?
Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to address before we move on is, one of the things that I watch when I, because I do watch some of the county meetings and some of the other meetings, and a lot of times, their constituents can't attend meetings. So, they do send in emails with questions, requests, observations. And I think it's a great way to receive information from our constituents as well. By consensus, does anyone have a problem when we get to the right area, in terms of council business, allowing statements from the public coming in at the right time?
I encourage it.
I do, too.
I do, too.
Okay. Okay. So, when we get to the right place, we'll accept the statement. I just wanted to make sure, just as a general rule of thumb, if we're going to be okay with this.
But this is going to go forward regardless of what meeting. I mean, we should encourage this all the time.
Correct.
Especially given limited attendance.
Yes.
Sure, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure before we go any further that.
But can we go ahead and make some type of announcement, or to have this all funnel to one, as opposed to somebody reaching out here or there, just funnel it to?
Well, it would go to our clerk, and then our clerk would pass it along. So, that's how it's going to proceed. And the way that I'd like to do it is, just put it in the council minutes, and then have the clerk publish it when we get there, if we can do that. So, is that okay?
Oh, that's fine. Sal will get stuff now. As a matter of fact, we have one item tonight that we had a summary request, and I can either read it, or Sal can read it. It's your pleasure, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I wanted to move on to the consent agenda. I was looking for a motion.
Motion for consent, approve consent agenda, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First item up for council business is the return of, from two weeks ago, is the approval of purchase of two F-250 vehicles for the utility department. I was going to turn that over to Mr. Sossman for introduction.
Yes, Mayor, thank you much. As you'll recall, a couple weeks ago, we discussed the acquisition for the utility department of two Ford F-150, some, sorry, not 150s, a little bigger. And you'll see under the item description in your agenda package, as well as an attachment there, too, item 72 of the Department of National Services State contract, we did piggyback off of it. And we recommend that after your review consideration, and we'll try to answer whatever questions you may have, is the acquisition of those two. And they will be fully equipped here. So, for $82,335, we can buy up these two and have them delivered very soon, put them into operation at our utility department. And that's something, when we were discussing capital needs a little while ago, it's something that's desperately needed. So, my recommendation, and I'm sure Sean will echo that wholeheartedly, is to move and vote to approve the acquisition thereof.
Thank you. And I was going to ask our city attorney, any issues with the piggybacking the way that it was set up in this particular occasion?
No. I don't have any problems with it, when the sheriff's association was listed, what state, what state, those two major ones, I checked the state, 2005 by two, people don't have that list, they have the actual one, the light contract on file with them, with the two major ones. And then, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, if you do ask, but then you went to three local dealerships, and that's right, after that number, that would be the other.
Yes, sir. What you originally handed, what you originally handed were Sourcewell, a Sourcewell one, a Florida sheriff's, the Florida state contract, and also the Sourcewell and the Florida state, or the Florida sheriff are also on the Florida state contract.
Okay. That's all the, that's the only question that I had. This is a budgeted item, so I don't have any further issues.
Motion to approve purchase of two F-250 vehicles?
Second. Before we put it to a vote, I want to open this for the public discussion.
Actually, I have a question. It says here on the thing, all rows must be completed for standard and piggyback purchases over $2,500. We have one row completed. I know we had three numbers, but none of the numbers are listed here. I'm just making sure, are we okay with this? Or, I'm just a little confused from the instructions itself. Only row number one must be completed for standard purchases under $2,500. All rows must be completed for standard and piggyback, meaning that we should have three numbers included across the line, and we only have one. So, I'm, are we correct on this?
Yes, sir, actually, we are, because we're using a state contract. You also did it in February. Ms. Martinez gave you one number.
But there was three bids included. I know she didn't fill out the.
Yes, sir. Originally, there was three bids. Unfortunately, the three bids were, they're about 90 pages apiece. This is a completed, this is a completed truck, and it does have the parameters that you set with the police department, which was the budgets, or the maintenance contracts. So, this is actually the lowest, it doesn't come in as the lowest number, but to take away the contracts for maintenance and oil changes, for the F-250s are five years, 60,000 miles, we don't touch anything. Ford and Port Ritchie does service, and they still came in less than Allen, Jay, and Duval Ford.
So, what tells me that?
I didn't put this package together, sir. I handed everything to, what I was, you know, I was turned in, and this is how it was delivered to you folks.
We do have all of that, but it was considered to be overkill since the last time we came in, and when we did have those before you. And Sean did explain to you at that time that Ford Ritchie does beat the other ones that we got from. There was one, there was one dealer, for some reason, that said they want to put a proposal in, but we did have three.
I think, you know, and correct me if I'm, usually, when I present stuff or anything, at least there's a summary sheet, if nothing else. So, everyone can see that this is the lowest number, this is how we came upon it, and something, because right now, I have one page that says, they're $82,000, and trust me, it's the lowest. And I can't necessarily, you know, abide by that so much. Not that I'm, you know, saying anything, but at least give me a summary sheet or something that says, yes, we've done the homework, yes, we've gotten to where we need to be, and yes, this is the lowest number. Not one, and, you know, technically, this isn't even filled out correctly by its own sheet, because all three should be, lines should be filled out because of the piggybacking. So, I'm kind of against it, just for formality sake, but that's all I'll say.
If you don't want to prove it tonight, you could continue for two more weeks, which is what you did the last time. And then, we'll just bring this same form back and bring those other bids back to you, so you will have the proof in front of you.
Well, we have a motion and a second at this point, so procedurally, that's where we sit. I am going to open it up to the public, Mr. Mueller, I know you signed up for this. Welcome, come on up.
Thank you, Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. Thank you, Todd, because I'm on the same page. When we're spending money, and we, as a council, we as residents, should have discipline in the decisions that we make. And in those decisions, you compare all the pricing, and you state your case, which I still don't know why they're buying them, and they probably have a legitimate need, but nothing is indicated. So, in the first place, there's no why we need these trucks. Second place is, part of the entire business case should address what happens to the old trucks they're using. There's evidently a need, there's evidently trucks that are probably going to be replaced, that's not addressed, so that's missing. So, what happens with that? Don't know. And when are these needed? Are they needed today? Is there immediate need? Is this future need? It sounds like it's 2021 budget? Don't know. So, what I think should be addressed is, somebody should take business case 101, line item, the stuff that we're buying and why, compare that with the pricing, by all the pricing, and then pick a reason why we need to buy from A, B, or C, and present that to council. And until we do that, we're kind of wasting time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Mr. Mueller's the only one that signed up. Is anyone else, would anyone else like to speak? Ms. McCleary, come on up. Welcome back to the podium.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Mueller.
Before I put it to a vote, I didn't make any comments on this, but my only issue isn't just what we have to look at up here, but what's in these packets, I think, is also published to the public, so they can see and know what we're doing. And I think for that reason, we should have all three bids as a cover sheet, so everybody can see why we approved what we approved, so it's a little more transparent to the public. So, that's my input, and it'll explain why I vote the way that I vote, not that I don't think we need trucks. So, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, motion doesn't pass, and I was going to ask to set it on the next agenda with the supporting documents, please.
We'll do that.
Thank you. All right, the next item that we have up for council business is a waterfront overlay district engineering proposal, and I was going to pass that to Mr. Sossman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a project that I guess has been talked about for a number of years, and on your continuing services contract, if you will, there's a company by the name of Ayers Engineering. I've met with them, talked with them several times. And they're actually, going back to a comment that was made earlier about the boat ramps and the condition during, or boat ramp, I should say, at Nick's Park, they have been working on that. They felt like that, since we'd probably get a better bid if we expanded on that project, and since it's a waterfront overlay district, the proposal in front of you is one for their services, to decide to sign a scope of work. I've had comments from individuals, as well as most recently, some from a citizen. So, they would define the scope, they would do the field reconnaissance to see what is actually out there in the field existing. And they would also do a feasibility report to you. I think the grand price is just under $25,000, which is why I bring it to you tonight, even though it's on that continuing services contract. If you approve this, and I think they had somewhat of a conceptual for what I guess is referred to as like a pathway there. And one of the citizens that has contacted me, if I can read it into the record at this time.
Yes, please do. First, I want to accept it into the record, and then ask that you publish it, if we may. First, I want to accept it into the record, and then ask that you publish it, if we may.
Okay.
Oh, Sean's gonna read it.
Members of council, as the waterfront area continues to evolve, the multi-use path on tonight's agenda is the beginning of great things to come. The project does fall short as it does not connect to the sidewalk that ends at Old Post Road. I do understand the area from where the project is expected to end, and where the sidewalk ends at Old Post is private property. However, the more the city engages with business owners, the more opportunity we have for our city to continue to evolve. This project should involve our business leaders with the WOD to maximize our opportunities as well as cost. Would the members of council consider a workshop first with the business owners of the WOD before you move forward spending funds on a proposed plan that does not appear to deliver the best value for Port Ritchie? This was from Michael Grimes, 5440 Quest Drive.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Saucerman.
As I stated, this is a proposal that's just under $25,000, and it would be to do the field recon work, decide the scope of services, and come back with a conceptual. I can forward, if you accept this request from Mr. Grimes, I can actually forward that on to the engineering firm for them to consider and look at. I know there was a response to one of his earlier emails to some of the property he was referring, adding into the project was private property. That doesn't necessarily mean it'd have to stop the project at all, because you could have public participation, whether it's via their, via property that's on the private side, or whether it's from a helpful funding source, if you will. So we can look at that. If you make the project bigger, that's your option. I would welcome citizen comments in terms of their ideas to be put into a conceptual to be brought back to you, as well as comments, obviously, from yourself, Mayor, and the city council.
Thank you. And I wanna open it for discussion with council, and I kinda wanted to open on this. One of the things that we're tasked with as a council and as a city is public safety. As our waterfront overlay district grows, there's just simply not enough room to accommodate the traffic, the people, the cars, and there's really no means, or not very small means, low means, for pedestrian traffic. We just don't really have the means for that right now, and I think that's a public safety issue that really needs to be addressed. I also think that it should be addressed sooner than later, and a common walkway that goes through the waterfront district would certainly address that issue. As, we have certain places now where there are no sidewalks, and people walk out in the road with the traffic coming and going, and it's just a big problem. So, also, just as a practical matter, it'll just make the area much nicer, and I think we need to enhance that area. And I think that we've already made some strides, as we've dedicated $200,000 for some lighting and such, but I think as those projects move on, we should address some of the other issues, and if I'm not mistaken, I think we do have some money in the CRA that would be probably a pot of money that we could use to do something nice down there, to enhance public safety and lighting, and those are all things that cure blight, too, which is really the direction of the CRA, and I think that's kinda where the direction I wanted to go.
All of those could be definitely included. Improvements to the current walkways, as you indicated, street lighting, maybe even lighting some of the walkways where possible, depending on the property availability. Street signage, some folks call it Wayfair finding signage, Mr. McClary's probably definitely familiar with that, and different lines of work. Also, some type of entryway that would give a better definition to that someone is approaching or entering the waterfront overlay district, because some folks can drive past on 19 at 50 miles an hour and never know what they're missing. So I think some of that type of would help a lot. And obviously, from a public safety perspective, we could also look at the possibility of some property acquisition for additional parking. One thing I have mentioned to, more than once, to the engineer, is to look at ways to expand the boat ramp itself at Nick's Park, and also redesign it because of safety issues.
Thank you. So with that, I like the idea of this. I think that Mr. Grimes' note is well taken. I don't think it precludes us from expanding the project around or down Old Post, because obviously, we want to keep pedestrian traffic as well as we can down there. But I think this is a nice start, and really, the idea to have an engineer tell us whether or not we can or can't do it based on some of the challenges we have, I think, is the best way to start this project. So I was for that, and I wanted to open it for discussion and/or any motions.
I have a comment. The project limit shows that this is ending right there on Treadway, right by the Pirate Bar. Here's my concern, on Old Post, we have a sidewalk, a pathway, goes north, south, parallels with Old Post, and it ends on the southern tip at Grand Boulevard, and then you come to no man's land from Old Post onto Treadway, where, again, our concern is public safety, people walking the street. I like to expand this and to include that area. I see citizens walking on that pathway all the time. I myself, and I know numerous of my neighbors are walking, going to that waterfront district, and if they get to that area, they're walking in the street. Limited lighting after hours, it is a public safety, so, but the scope here ends right there on Treadway by the Pirate Bar, doesn't go beyond that. I like to have this expanded to include that no man's land. I do understand that there's issues, but hopefully, this proposal or this engineering service will be able to find out what our hurdles are, so we could keep this moving forward.
And I agree, because the natural flow of traffic is from Grand, that light, and down Old Post and in, so that intersection and that little piece of Old Post should certainly be part of the feasibility study, I would think. So I agree with that statement.
So I don't know what we need to do, but I would like to see this expand to include that.
If I'm not mistaken, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong here, but I think if you made a motion, if everybody else agreed to it, voted in that direction, we could, you could approve it with those modifications.
Okay. Before, oh, go on, sorry. I've done this once or twice before. If we authorize this engineer to proceed today, tomorrow, whatever, he's gonna go under the pretenses as, I can only work within the right of way that's allowed of the roadway. And that's somewhat eliminating, especially over by Gill Dogs, a lot of that property's privately owned. We're getting the cart a little bit above, before the horse here. I kind of would like to see the city reach out to the various private businesses along this path. Two reasons. One, if someone gets hit by a car in front of Gill Dogs, or Hooters, or whatever the case may be, I think you know as well as anybody, the business is gonna get sued, the city's gonna get sued, everyone in, within 50 feet of it is gonna get sued, no matter what. The businesses have some probably desire to limit the safety hazard that's along these roads. Now, the businesses may or may not be able to contribute monies to the project, but they also can contribute land to the project without much of an issue, which kind of expands the scope and could present a better design alternative if we could get more land to accommodate these sidewalks in certain areas, or whatever the case may be. My suggestion is, let's talk with these businesses, kinda gauge their involvement and their desire to improve this walkway area, and then put the engineer on the right path of what's available to him.
Can I touch on that for a moment?
Sure.
I think the place that it's most important is as you come down Treadway between Pirate Bar and Gill Dogs is the narrowest spot. There's drainage there, there's a parking lot in front of the Pirate Bar, and then you have, probably the only property would be the Gill Dog side. So what I would suggest is that during a feasibility study, do it with the landowner not donating land versus if a landowner were to donate land, so you'd have two different looks. And then at that point, if it's more feasible to go with a plan that where there's some donated land, then reach out to the property owner and see if that's possible or not. But, you know, I think that, you know, that we could still go forward with the feasibility study with that understanding that that's a potential, and I would think that the greatest potential would be that strip of land, because everywhere else right now, it's undeveloped, for the most part, where you, I think, probably could fit a strip, when you're talking about going down by catches and all that, there's open pieces of land, so, where we have easements even. So I, you know, I think that, just from my limited knowledge of that area, I think that's gonna be the sticking point in terms of having space and enough area to, room to do that. So I would suggest going forward, with the schematic, that may include both, and then if we get there, then reach out to the business owner and go from there.
I would actually reach out to all of them and see what they're, gauge what there is. Maybe we can make something really special out of that whole area in terms of walkway, instead of just a simple sidewalk, and, you know, obviously, we're looking at the bare minimum, but we want this to be a presentation area, too, for-
Well, I think that, the way that I saw it, it was a kind of a 10-foot path, in that it would be put with pavers and stuff, so it'd be fairly expansive.
Maybe, I don't see that here.
I think that was the general idea, from what I understood.
Actually, and in this proposal, on the, actually, page 22 there, where it's always the cover sheet, it says, the preliminary investigations will be comprised of right-of-way investigation, clear zone reviews, with some of which you're talking about tonight, obviously, working with the agencies, and he'd have to decide the sidewalks, not just for pedestrian traffic, but also that pedestrian traffic that would be for people with ADA-
Yeah, that's a six-foot walkway.
Right. So you're talking about that, the stormwater, and the field reconnaissance, and he goes into, as Jill mentioned to me, something's a possibility, as part of his duties could be, of course, obviously, he'd be charging us for it, would be actually to find out how much land, if any, property owners would be willing to contribute to the project.
Yeah, I mean, the bare minimum from this proposal, he's gonna give you a five-foot, I think it's five-foot or six-foot walkway, with minimal lighting and handicap ramps. That's what we're asking for, that's basically the right-of-way investigation. He's gonna establish the limits of the right-of-way, and then design a sidewalk within that right-of-way. And that's what, you know, this is looking at, and there's nothing wrong with that, but if we want to build up beyond that, then we're gonna have to start telling him where to gear himself towards, or do the legwork ourselves, and talk to the business owners, and seeing what's available, and then he'll establish, you know, right-of-way plus X.
And it doesn't have to be the same side. You could have an eight or 10-foot walkway all the way around, and where we're limited on land, then it goes down to five or six foot, just in that area. That may have to happen, but-
We won't know unless we ask.
No, I understand that. So I agree that we should go for a more expansive project, because it's gonna be a long-term investment. That having been said, I like the idea of where this is going, and I don't have a problem if you wanna vote to say, let's expand the parameters to see what kind of donations or contributions can come from the business.
Well, my only concern is, if we establish him right now at $24,000, and I have no problem with the monies, per se, he's gonna go off within the right-of-way, and then, you know, two weeks down the road, or whatever, we go and say, oh, well, wait a minute, now Gill Dog says he wants it, and now he's backtracking, it's just gonna cost us more money at the end of the day. Been there, done it, got the T-shirt. You know, I just don't wanna put the cart before the horse, is all I'm concerned about.
And in all fairness, I think there's always been talks between business owners and the city here.
Yeah.
They've been ongoing for years.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the only way to really get the ball rolling is to get an engineer down there to say what can be done.
And maybe we engage him to talk to the business owners as well, and, I mean, that may be another stage of this, but let's do it all in one shot.
My input would be to widen the scope of the project to include, just like the mayor said, if we had this property here. I know at one time, Mr. Sorjian did discuss donating some property, or letting us use part of it for sidewalks, and I don't know whatever happened to that, but I know at one time, he was amenable to do that. So I think that's very, a good way to do it, but I think if we include it in the scope, I'm always feared, the things that we seem to run into here at the city, that happens a lot, is if we don't continue and push stuff, they tend to trail off.
Let's put it in his scope, then, and-
That's what I'm saying, let's include it in the scope.
Yeah.
So if we include it in the scope, there are a couple other things that, I mean, on my notes, I had a private and public project, which we talked about earlier, but another important thing we need to include in that scope is if you follow Treadway down to Seaside End, and I've discussed this with Len before, we own that property. There's a lot of potential parking, and I like that to be added into that scope, because parking is our biggest issue down there, and we, that property's been sitting there dormant. So if we can get that included in the scope as well, as also the sidewalks and potential use of private property, I think we could get this all wrapped up and move forward.
I agree, because when, you know, I went to the meetings with the, where they were talking about the under, the bridge cart path, and the engineers did the feasibility study, but they did, they had three different studies, and one was if you have the property, if you don't have the property, et cetera, and that was all factored in, and then there was a price differential, because you had to purchase certain properties. So I think we should expand the scope of what we're talking about, and then you may get two different plans, Plan A and Plan B, depending on what you have for property, and I think that's the way to go.
I do, too, but I wanna continue moving forward, like I said. So if we can include that in the scope of the entire job, look at it that way, also make sure we include that area that's down there for potential parking. I like to keep it moving forward, so it doesn't peter out, and we can get some stuff done.
And if we include that area for potential parking, also, again, the scope needs to go down Treadway to that parking.
Exactly. No, I agree.
Yeah, that's included in, change the scope of the work, that has to be in there.
I like that idea. So with that, do we have to go back to the engineer to get a quote to expand the project?
I was fixing to ask our city attorney, what might be the cleanest way is to go back with him, and I could do that, go back with him tomorrow, and ask him to submit an expanded proposal, if you will, maybe with an alternative, alternate A and a B, one being something similar to what you've got, with just expanding it to have city property involved, and the other to, you know, the what ifs, if we could get some of the other property involved, and what that would cost. Yeah, it shouldn't be that much differential, because he's gonna be doing the field research anyway.
Right.
The only thing that would, if we ask him to go door-to-door, so to speak, go to all the different bars, restaurants, and so forth there, that might be something that would be more time-consuming, because obviously, he would be time-dependent on those individual establishment owners.
And I like the way the county did it, where they had the feasibility study with and without, and then once it was with, then they started reaching out to the property owners to see if they could work something out.
And then what I want him to do ultimately, when he comes back and presents, if it's gonna be alternate A and B, is to have something on the order of a 3D-type presentation that he can show you, because I think, you know, we all agree to say a picture's worth a thousand words, well, you know, I think something like this may be worth several thousand words.
I think we get, increase the scope and have it go back to the engineers and have a number brought back.
Yep. By consensus, are we okay with that?
Do we run in any kind of bid threshold requirements, or?
They're approved engineers.
Okay.
On your continuing, you'll see an A agreement, so this will be the form of a task order that will be tacked on to that.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yep.
My, we need to bring this back to you and let you consider, I guess, the CRA board.
Yes, Lord. Because that way we-
I would rather-
I thought it would have to come out of-
I thought so.
Yeah, I always thought it was coming out of there anyway, to be honest.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a higher number, for sort, I don't know how much higher, but in that way, we could definitely be-
Can we move it to a CRA meeting and tack that on to our next meeting?
Right.
Actually, don't we have a CR?
We have one Thursday.
After the workshop.
Yeah, we'll have one Thursday, if he can turn our number around.
After the workshop, we have a CRA.
Workshop, yeah, workshop.
Then we can, we can-
I don't know if he can work up a price on one day, but-
Right.
I'll like it, because what I'll try to do is put the pressure on the engineer tomorrow morning, and have him to do a quick turnaround of proposal, and get it to me tomorrow afternoon, or Wednesday, or Thursday morning, and then we can add it to the agenda for you.
Okay. And if they can't, if they need more time, then we'll do it for the next meeting.
They wouldn't need more time.
Okay. All right, we're telling we're a little bit behind that one.
We hope he's not on vacation. All right, that closes the discussion on- All right, that closes discussion on item, on that item, I wanted to go to the next item, which is the police department surplus of equipment. Yes. Okay. So...
Was this for the last one?
Yep. Come on up, I was gonna reserve comments for the next time we bring it back, but come on up, let's...
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. With regard to this project, I think it's incumbent upon us to seek input from the business owners down there, and it sounds like we're on that page, but I think we need to get that input first, so that we can go and ask what it is we wanna ultimately develop. So we need business input. Potential grant opportunities there, I think there ought to be somebody looking into that. Also signage, you know, like I believe Mr. Sossman said, potentially maybe a Port Ritchie mural of our new name, once that gets defined. That would be all the things to help encourage what we're trying to do there, and I think it's all good stuff. But I think there's possibly maybe an opportunity for a workshop, just to socialize that, and do a better communication with the community and the business owners to get the input, and potentially look at expanding, if those business owners wanna contribute property to get a better feel and risk, and all those kinds of things going on, I think it's all good. Also, this is, there's one quote, how is it, we have one quote, isn't there other companies that do this, and don't we have alternatives there? I'd like to see competitive quotes on some of this stuff. I understand you're trying to get a feasibility study, but I think there's plenty of capable engineering firms that probably can produce that. Potentially a public and private partnership, I think that's all good, that's what needs to happen. Along with that, I think there needs to be a concerted, concerned effort to really inventory our own assets in this city, and get everything down on a piece of paper. What's obsolete, what's nearing end of life, how many drains, how many lines, useful life on that, so this is all part of kinda where we're going with this, trying to bring this city up to current standard, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Ms. Rogers, come on up.
Pat Rogers, 4838 Sunset Boulevard. Well, for twenty years, we've been talking about this waterfront overlay district, and what we wanna do, without getting any real input from businesses, so I think that's a good idea, but I would like to see us have a workshop where representatives from those businesses and the citizens could all talk. I was at the meeting for the walkway under the bridge, and that was a county, city, and city combination meeting, it was very interesting, a lot of data was put out, but I'd like to see us have a good, healthy workshop, where we know, because right now, most of the citizens don't know what the waterfront overlay district is, what your plans are, you know, they just hear W, you know, the waterfront, WOD, and what's that, you know, more alphabet. So I think a workshop would be in our best interest, plus the scope of what we'd like to do, and what the businesses might see from their side.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers, you had a...
Yeah, I mean, I understand what's being said with workshops with the businesses, what this proposal is for is basically a feasibility study, we're gonna get a report from the engineer that says we can put in a six-foot, ten-foot, whatever project. What you saw from the, for the golf cart path underneath presented was actually schematic design level, which is not incorporated, this is actually the next step. After we get the feasibility report, then we approve, and they cost us more money, and then they go into schematic design, design development, and then full construction documentation. Where we were with that workshop, you were actually in schematic design and going through. There's a lot more steps between here and there. The question, the reason I'm bringing that up, is this feasibility report doesn't necessarily detail a 3D rendering, or anything of that nature. We may wanna, if we do wanna include that, again, we're, one, we're getting in the schematic design, but two, I don't see it in this report, so if we're getting a nice, pretty picture, make sure the nice, pretty picture's in the proposal.
I got it, and that's so, but that's why it may take him a little bit longer than the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours to get something to us, but...
And that's usually schematic design, which is the next step, not beyond feasibility study. Right now, we're just being told, yes, you know, we'll get a six-foot, and if we get this, we'll get an eight-foot, or a ten-foot, or whatever we're gonna get, that's about all we're gonna get. But it's gonna be an engineer, and then he'll say, and it's gonna cost us X hundred thousand dollars, or whatever. So that's gonna be the output, so everyone's aware of it.
And we may come to a point where it's gonna cost us to go this path versus this, or this path, and then that's where it really opens up for discussion, to figure out what people are willing to pay as a city, you know, so that's kinda where we're at, from what I can understand, too. So, close, okay, so we'll close that out for discussion. Now, I wanted to move on to the police department surplus of equipment, I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Sossman.
Thank you, Mayor, and I forgot for backup, obviously, Chief Cyrus Robinson across from me, but he's got a myriad of items, that's sorta kinda like a, I won't say Catch-22, but maybe like a Heinz 57 mixture, he's got some old drug info kits, he's got some old walkie-talkies, miscellaneous bracelets, and brackets, and wiring harnesses, some old radios, or old radio batteries, some things that are no longer compatible with service, particularly since we're moving over to a newer and better CAD system, so he's recommending that order to make room, and his limited domain, not too far from here, that you consider authorizing him to sell this as a surplus.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up for any discussion and/or motion. I guess the common sense question that I have, just to make sure, is to the chief, do you see any value at all to the city for any of this equipment?
Well, this list of items, along with the list we'll be giving during the next couple of city council meetings, are going through things that should have been either surplus or thrown out some time ago, so we're going through some of these items, some we're gonna surplus, and eventually, because of their cost and the type of item, and then we're gonna dispose of others, we're going to try to recoup some costs through some auction sites, law enforcement specifically, auction sites, and then if not, then we have some other auction sites that we'd like to try to recoup some of the funds from. It's not, some of the items you'll see on this list, and some of the items you'll see on the forthcoming list, the chances of getting a substantial amount of money is not gonna be really feasible, but we wanna make that, make that, we'll try it.
Well, I guess the point is, this stuff has zero value to us at this point, is that kinda where we're going?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's just eating up space, and...
That's correct.
Do something with it, okay. Thank you, that's all the questions that I have.
I do have one question, is that, any of those walkie-talkies, could they be repurposed for utility workers, or anything like that? I'm not sure, or are they only lease vans, and they wouldn't be...
Well, they could, but I believe that they already have a system in place that they utilize, because that was one of the things that we spoke about, when I spoke to Captain Koch about it, they already have something.
Looking for a motion, and/or further discussion?
Make a motion to approve the equipment from the police department surplus, and depose of it properly.
Second. Anyone from the public need to comment on this? Mr. Mueller, come on up.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive, and thank you, Chief, for making an observation and trying to clean things up, I appreciate looking after that, after all, I've cut my teeth on doing inventory for thirty years, so I know how difficult that is. What I'd like to know is, potentially, when we're buying things, maybe it would be important for us to try to set in motion a plan, that typically, you're buying things to replace things. We do real good on buying it, but real bad on getting rid of the old stuff, and that's not here, it's everywhere, that's business. But potentially, we're aware of that, and once we become aware of it, it's incumbent upon us to try to address it, and that's kinda where I'm coming from. So, maybe we can institute more best practices that would allow us to achieve better results in the future. One of the things that I know that we've been selling, things, vehicles, whatever, is there any reporting on any of that, to kinda give us a heads-up, pat on the back, that, hey, you know, we took all this stuff to the auction, and we achieved thousands of dollars of benefit back into the city, and we've recouped it? I think it's an opportunity that we can actually say, hey, we're doing something, we're moving forward, we've accomplished our mission, and here's the result, and it might be a good thing to kinda put something like that together. I know that there's been a lot of, you know, vehicles, and boats, and stuff like that, and fire trucks being sold, so it's an opportunity for you, you may wanna assess it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing no hands, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item up for discussion is approval of Resolution 20-07, and certificate of incumbency for master equipment lease purchase agreement, and I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Sossman.
Well, thank you, Mayor, backed by popular demand, and Chief Robinson knows that we're not looking to stop you in the process of acquiring these vehicles, but several meetings back, you authorized us to proceed using cash to buy the fire truck, so that we would, this was a $535,000, and we didn't wanna spend that additional $80,000 or so for interest, but here, we're doing something for three years. It's a lease through PNC, their interest rate's roughly 2.7%, which is really good, I think, Mr. McCleary, Council McCleary pointed out at a previous meeting, that that's really, really inexpensive, and it is, so you have before you something that the PNC requires, which we're ready to sign these documents whenever you say yes tonight, is that the certificate of incumbency for the master equipment lease purchase agreement, and there's also a schedule in there. We're not changing the acquisition price at all, it's just that we're gonna spread the cost of it over three years.
Thank you. Any discussion or comment?
Mr. Matthew, you wrote a lengthy letter at the back, do you agree with this lease overall, or is there something that we should know about?
No, I'm fine with the master lease, it's somewhat... I'm fine with the master lease, it's very generic, there's, the specifics are in the exhibit, it's eight-one with the mathematics of it, it's very, very low, I spoke to you for the bank. They want us to have a full resolution, in case we don't pay, that we have no getting out of it, but as far as the documents, I'm fine with it. Actually, I think there is a certificate of incumbency there, we're gonna have the mayor and the clerk sign that, authorize Mr. Sossman to sign it, but the short answer to your question, I don't think it all, I'll go to the left of the page, but you might see it in there.
Thank you. Any motion and/or comment?
Motion to approve Resolution 2007, and certificate of incumbency.
Second. Before we put it to a vote, any comments from the general public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item up for council business is our city manager search discussion, and I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Sossman, just to open up, because I think he's had some contact with Colling and Basinger.
I had contact as late as, I guess, 5:30, quarter-six this afternoon, he said, with the recruitment he was doing, where he said some of his five or sixth semi-finalists that he was gonna recommend to their particular city, drop out at the last, so to speak, but he did send late last night, and I've got some packages being put together that I'll have delivered to you tomorrow, or I've got some back on my desk, I can bring those to you after this meeting's over. They're too luminous, honest to goodness, for you all to look at tonight, and try to make a comprehensive review. Each one of us about thick as a large city former telephone books, since they don't make telephone books that large anymore, you could do it all online, but anyway, he sends, I actually asked them in certain words, based on the question he asked, of their resumes, and their past history, some of them actually wrote, obviously, a lot more than a five to ten-page memorandum, they, honest to God, did them a whistle, so to speak. There's a lot, so that's good, but it's four candidates, unless any of them drop out as of late Saturday, he did not notice that, so I will have those available, like I said, I can either pass it out to you to take home tonight, the stack of all the candidates for each one of you is about yea-ha, it's incredible. So I know you won't be making a decision on that tonight, so I would encourage you to take a, take a look at it. If you have any questions for Mr. Benzinger, he's available, if you don't have his phone number, I can provide it, or I can provide his email, I think he's indicated to me that he's talked to, if not all of you, most of you, either on the phone, so with that, I'll leave it with you, it's your discussion, obviously, your decision, so that's sorta kinda my quick down and dirty, if you will, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate the update. One of the interesting things that has happened is we have an interim city manager that's been here now for multiple months, and originally, when we sought him out, he was, I think, vetted through the same agency, or similar agency, and really, his whole purpose was just to kinda hold down the fort, and make sure, you know, there's no immediate problems that happen in the city until we find a more permanent fix, and in my opinion, he's exceeded my expectations, because I think he's really moved along really well with the employees, as well as with some of the projects that we have, in terms of not just being what we would look at as a temporary, but I think that he's moving us forward, probably in a more permanent direction, positive direction at this point. So I wanted, I just wanted to know if I can ask Mr. Sossman, if you would be willing to entertain staying longer, and on a more permanent basis in the city, or we've originally contracted with you for about six months, and you came out of retirement to help us, so we certainly are very appreciative, but I kinda was curious as to what your position was, in terms of whether or not you would entertain more than what you've already agreed to, in terms of employment.
If you'll notice, Mr. Mueller likes to sit close to me, because we chat between meetings as early recent as today, but he will sorta give me, down in the country, if you will, chastise me in a mild manner, about going back into retirement, and I told him, I said, my wife won't let me retire. She, and I found that we have sort of kind of a mutual bond, because he at one time worked for GTE, which became Line-X, if I remember right, and then went on to become Horizon, but my wife started out years ago with Southern Bell, which became Bell South, which became AT&amp;T, where she retired, but she and I don't have children, or grandchildren, or anything like that, so when she tells me I can't retire, until she tells me I can retire, and when I told him that, he said, this is a long answer to your short question, I'm sorry, oh, this is a story, but he says, you need a wife like mine, and I said, why? He says, well, she just told me we need a bigger boat, and I said, okay, maybe my wife will let me buy a boat one day, you know, I've got a new car, which I feel pretty good about, since I've only had it three months, but anyway, I'm not really ready to retire, I'm not having those responsibilities shin off and footloose and fancy-free. We got married way back when, when I was in undergrad school, and have stayed married ever since, I won't tell you how long, because we're up in the national average of married life, if you will, but, you know, I'd be willing to consider, you know, discussing with you, or with Jim, or the city council, you know, an extension of my contract, whether it's extending as an interim, or whether it's extending as a, I hate to use the word permanent, it's for city and county management, because I've done both, and I've been in some places... and county management, because I've done both, and I've been in some places 12 years, 19 years, and two different, three different jobs with that without the establishment. But, you know, I would definitely be willing to consider staying on beyond, and that would be up to you in terms of how long you want me to stay, but if we could work out something, it would be my pleasure. I've been happy here, I have fun, I think we've made some forward progress, to use football terms, and if I stayed, well, to go back to what you said about the, being a housekeeper, so to speak, which is nothing wrong with that, holding the four together, I tend to see, as my wife will tell, Mr. McCleary's wife is here, so she may say the same thing about him, I don't know, she says, you create work. And I haven't had any Department head scream yet, so I like to work with them and find things to do, and ways to improve, not keep doing things the way we've always done, but if there's a new way to do it, and do it better, maybe more efficiently, more better cost-saving, I'd like to do that. So the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I wanted to open it up, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, it's the first time that we've broached really the city manager search discussion since we originally hired a search firm, and I wanted to start with Mr. Consella to my right, and just kind of have him weigh in.
I really appreciate what you've done, helping us, and with Mr. Sausen, when you came on board, and what I've been impressed with, is that you came on board, you took ownership, and you're handling business as if you were here to stay, as opposed to being in the interim, and, and just kind of putting things aside, waiting, but you've kept us moving along, and I really appreciate that. Very, very impressed with that.
Thank you. Mr. McCleary, do you have any thoughts?
I, I think you've done a great job as an interim, you've really taken possession of it, you haven't just made sure the chairs weren't stolen out of the building when we worked, and I would have no problem with you entering your resume in for consideration with the other candidates. I, I think it would be unfair to them, including Colin, well, he gets paid either way, but he, he's put a lot of time and effort into this as well. I think, you know, allowing you to go to submit your resume, to go from the interim to the permanent position is very acceptable, there's nothing wrong with it, but you should go through the, the same procedures as everyone else, so we can be presented with a full presentation of all candidates for the position. That's kind of my take on it, because quite honestly, I received a brief summary from Colin today on all candidates. Not saying that anyone's more qualified or less qualified at this stage, but I think in fairness to everybody, that it should be a unified review.
Thank you, Mr. McCleary.
I think we're all on the same page, I was going to actually ask if he would submit his resume with, with the group as well, so I think we're all on the same page, and I'd be happy to, to have you here as well. So definitely, I'd like to get a look at everybody, but we would really appreciate if you would put your name in the hat, so to speak.
Thank you. And with that, I, I wanted to know if anyone else had any other comments? There was, I think, some people signed up for this, so let me open it to the public just for a moment, I think. Mrs. Pat Rogers? Oh, there's another, okay. Any show of hands of anyone else that would like to weigh in? Pastor Lord, come on up.
Leonard Lord, Pastor, A114 Leo Kid Avenue. No, there just seems to be a, a type of kinship. I know when I met Mr. Sausen, and then I just asked him the question, I says, were you having fun here yet? And he says, yeah, I kind of like it. And usually, when somebody likes something, they do good at it. And so, you know, just the very fact that now, you know, he's kind of set in the saddle, and everybody sees how he rides, at least you've got something there, you know? So as you go forward, then you can look, and if you do have any hesitations, you know you got security there. And so I just, I think it's, I think it's great, and I know you need to be fair to all of them, but, you know, when something's fit, and you might not want to break it and refit, but we'll see what the Lord has, but I, I think it's, I think it's good. Congratulations, looking forward to working with you more. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Lord.
I, I do have a question. When we, when all this was brought forward to the council about looking for interim city manager, was there something that we approved? And refresh my memory, I'm getting at that age, I don't recall, but we agreed that, or was it brought up that whoever we bring on board as our interim manager was not able to apply?
Correct.
I mean, did we vote on something? Is there something we have to change?
We, we did, that was the original discussion. I think it was more by, I think it was a consensus amongst us at the time.
It wasn't a resolution, it was a consensus to it, so.
So, and, and one of the things that I would like to point out is, the applicant pool was a lot smaller than I thought it would be. So this gives us just, I think, more options to choose from at this point. You know, in my opinion, if I had, if they had 10 or 12 people, I might feel a little bit differently, but having a smaller pool of applicants, I think this makes more sense. And that's just the way that it turned out, and from my discussions with Colin and Basinger, that it's not just our city, but other cities are having the same issues with, with applicants for these types of positions. So if we can, by consensus, would you like, we should probably go around and make sure that's okay, that he can apply for this, since we went to consensus the other way. Are you okay with it? I'm, I'm very happy with it. Okay.
I'm fine with it, but just, just as some feedback, I know Colin is also, we currently have four, and I believe Colin is actually looking at two more, so that would bring the total plus up to seven overall for it. So I know Colin was in the process of investigating the other two. Obviously, he will be doing some more vetting, I'm assuming, for Mr. Sausen, and so that we're probably pushing the total of this, the total decision process of this back another two to three weeks, just kind of putting everyone on the same page here.
But the most we're going to have at this point is seven, the least we're going to have is going to be four plus.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, just so everyone is aware, that we're probably going another two to four weeks out at this point.
As important a decision as it is, I, I'm.
I agree.
Okay, with that, so by consensus, I'm good?
I'm good with that.
Okay. So I think by consensus, we're going to open it. With that, I, I missed someone when I originally opened it to the public, so I wanted to, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, Mr. Mueller, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. I, I think it's a good choice to allow him to participate. The only thing that, that I would suggest, out of fairness, and there, again, I don't know how the process works, but if those resumes are being funneled through Mr. Sausen, and he's now a candidate in that pool, does that pollute the pool, and do you need to move that to a, to an independent source, so that they're not, you know?
He actually poses a good point. The big point of Colin is Mr. Sausen, and.
Yeah.
Probably shift to somebody else within the organization theoretically, non-elected affected. Because it's, here's the problem, you have the, the boss now interviewing with the consultant for the boss's position.
Well, I agree, I think, but all he's really done is pass, pass the stuff along. I don't think he's made any decisions. That having been said, is there anyone within the city that can just pass the stuff along to us, as it comes from Colin and Basinger?
Yeah, the clerk could do it.
Okay. Okay, so, and then from here on out?
It'll go to Sal and then to us.
And then the only issue is, you know, cutting checks and paying them, it's last to go to the city management, so.
Yeah, but that goes through the finance director and everything else, so that's.
Other than that, I, I think that covers all the issues. Mr. Matthew, do you see any other issues with the direction we're headed?
No, that's fine, in other words, and yes, Mr. Sausen, it was agreed upon, I think we approved the agreement with Mr. Basinger, that, that we would not do that, but it was just for a goal we built, and that's still, by consensus, that's fine. If you said that was Sal, we can send it to Paul, Paul, that's good.
Okay.
Even if you want to hire, that's a matter of course.
Okay. Thank you. That having been said, I think we're going to close the discussion, and then I'm sure it'll come back up in a month or so anyways, once we've reviewed all these packets. So we'll, we'll proceed from there as, as we need to.
Just one more thing, I guess we can start getting some of these packages, I know he's putting it together, and obviously, if they're so luminous, let's start looking at it now, and get them as they come along.
I think they're supposed to be delivered tomorrow, the next day, so.
Yeah, don't hold up that process, is what I'm saying.
Right, correct.
They're going to be getting, Sean and Jim will get them, they're literally as, when I say phone book size, I'm not kidding.
You don't have to give them to me now, I'm fine with that, I was just saying, don't stop the process.
Yeah, I just didn't want to drop them on you, but I do need to ask one question. You said, I have no problem, and I understand everything you're saying, because I don't want to be, you know, perceived of being a polluter of the pool, so to speak. But I also need to ask, should I submit, I'll have, I'll have Sal contact Mr. Bensinger tomorrow to let him know what, what the story is, but I need to ask, too, do I need to submit my resume to Mr. Bensinger, or to all of you, or whatever? Because I'm assuming.
I think you should go through the same vetting process that everyone else does.
To, to Mr. Bensinger, I think would be the best thing to do, so once Sal talks to him, he'll, he'll know what to expect from me.
Correct. And we've already seen a glance of it when you originally, because you were originally vetted at some point when you came to us, but you'd have to go through the same vetting process again as everybody else?
He's actually already done that for me.
Correct.
Because that's why he didn't want to recommend an ax murderer to you all, which could have been me.
Thank you, Sal. Little reading. I was hoping to see some pictures, but I don't. With that, we have one last item. Is everybody ready? I know that a couple people left, came back. We're going to move on to the next item, which is going to be the approval of inter-agency agreement, which is going to be for the, for the CAD system. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sausen for introduction.
As I think as Chief, Chief Robinson mentioned earlier, based on another question about the CAD system, this, this should hopefully put us at a conclusion of this long process, because you'll be considering that inter-agency agreement, as was mentioned earlier. It's between Pasco County Sheriff's Office and the Port Ritchie Police Department, and to access to a number of things, like the criminal justice information, CJI, and the maintaining of that criminal justice network consisting of computer-aided dispatch systems, which everybody here is interested in, I know. Records management system, RMS, this is referred to by those in the law enforcement, jail management, mobile computer terminals, and a number of other law enforcement agency rules and regulations, so we say we have to abide by that. I know the chief is all for it, I'll back him 100%, and this should put us in a position to complete it, so that hopefully, when next time you ask that question, we can say we're at 100%, full speed ahead. Oh, and one other bit, this chief and I did sign an inter-agency agreement just a day between, no kidding, between the Port Ritchie Police Department and the city of Port Ritchie. So if that's already done, pending your approval tonight, then we'll be, we'll be straight legal, so to speak.
Okay. Going to open it up for any kind of motion and/or discussion?
I'm only approving it if everyone promises I never have to hear about this CAD system again, other than it's working.
I have it down on my old business, we're going to talk about it after this for a little bit. You got a motion to approve?
Second.
Before we vote, any comments from the public? Seeing no hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, we're going to move on to old business. I'm going to start the other way this time, and start with our vice mayor, Denver.
I think we already covered the stuff I had for old business, which was Nick's Park and the CAD system, so I'm, I'm good to go.
I've covered everything I wanted to cover as well.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Okay. With that, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.